I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bressia.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Ms. Breeden.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
Yes ma'am, we need to add a closed session.
Can I get approval of the public meeting agenda?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. On our agenda tonight is superintendent's announcements and spotlights, and I'll go to Mrs. Radford.
Good evening, thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening to other members of the board tonight, and good evening to everyone that has joined us here at City Hall as we celebrate some recognitions that we want to share with everyone this evening. As our board members and Dr. Newman come down to join us. Mr. Hollingsworth and Ms. Brooks. Tonight we will begin with our School Board greeting card design announcement. Each year, Manassas City Public Schools students showcase their creativity by submitting stunning artwork inspired by the winter and holiday season, hoping to have their design chosen as the official holiday card for the School Board of the City of Manassas. Once again, the talent on display made selecting just one design an incredible challenge. You can see some of the submissions that are hanging before you tonight. Incredible work. After much consideration, the judges selected a delightful watercolor featuring a snowman right there in the center and baby penguins, created by 7th grader Michelle Ochoa. Michelle, are you here tonight?
Yes.
Yes, okay, please. You can see Michelle's design on the screen there as well. It's beautiful. If you stay for the remainder of the meeting, you can come down and look at some of the beautiful artwork that was shared with us. Don't leave yet, honey. We just want to say congratulations to Michelle for her outstanding work and for capturing the spirit of the season so beautifully. Thank you so much. I'm gonna take one with my phone too. Okay. There you go. Hold him up with that one. Alright, y'all ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Now, hold it just in case anybody... Yes, go ahead. Yes, thank you. And not only are you seeing this here, but this has gone out to hundreds of people, so others will be able to see Michelle's beautiful artwork. Next, we have our School Board Snow Day Video Contest announcement. Over the past couple of months, the School Board invited students and staff to channel their creativity and school spirit into videos announcing a snow day for the division. We haven't had one yet. The response was fantastic with several entertaining and imaginative entries submitted. Tonight, we're excited to share the top three submissions with you, judged on creativity, humor, school spirit, and production quality. First, we will have our third place winners. Right here. Oops. And I believe these students were in Ms. Demaria's class. Brianna A., Mateo, Kathleen, Ariana, and Brian V., so congratulations to them. And now, our second place winners will show theirs. That video was produced by Brian G., Joren, Kaia, Annie, and Elder, who are also in Ms. Demaria's class. And now, our first place winners, this is the moment we've been waiting for, we'll go ahead and then I'll tell you who they are. So go ahead and show number three. This is first place.
Good morning, Osborne. It's May with today's morning announcements. So far, it's just gonna be a regular boring day. Guys, guess what? It's a snow day. State of the art and a good time of the year.
So those were our first place winners, Maya, Natalia, Kaia, and Iwa from Ms. Miller's broadcast journalism class at Osborne High School. Congratulations to them. Are any of them here tonight? Oh yeah, come on up. They were here to support their teacher as well. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Yeah. Get everybody together, ready? Now, we represent everybody else. Yeah, in the middle, yes. Okay. Are we ready? Here we go. One, two, three. Okay. Did she get one too? Alright, here we go. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, the Mets Middle... I'm sorry, yes, the Mets Middle School Football Team had an incredible season, achieving an undefeated record, a true testament to their skill, perseverance, and teamwork. Tonight, Coach Hogan is here with some of his talented players to share highlights from their impressive season and recognize the contributions of our student athletes. Coach Hogan.
Thank you for having us, Dr. Newman, School Board members. Again, we're here, second year in a row. We've had... The last two years, we've been very fortunate to have some good talent, been able to run through the schedule undefeated. This year, we allowed a little bit more points than we did last year. Last year, we allowed six, this year, we allowed 20, so that's kind of a heartbreaker. But again, it wouldn't be done without the kids, the administration, the coaching staff, and everybody that's there to help us out. So further to do, the football players, would you come down?
Very good. I'm gonna have to get all of them, since I got away, huh? Yeah. Are they about to ban it? Yeah, I'll just kinda crowd in together, 'cause we gotta get these pictures. I know. Yes, okay. Alright, let's see. I think I'm gonna have to go with this one. Yeah, away from the... Can y'all scoot down just a little bit this way, so we won't get the podium in it? Yeah, just a little bit. Everybody slide, slide, yep. Alright, let me see, I see Ms. Williams. Yeah, who's that right behind you? Yeah, he's hiding behind you. Yes, yes, okay, yes. Alright, I see Chair. Okay, here we go. Everybody look this way. One, two, three. One, two, three. Don't move. Is that good? Chair, it's good.
One, two, three. Alright.
Yes! And for those that cannot see, the banner says, "Western District Champions." Thank you all for being here and allowing us to celebrate with you. And now, we're not done with Mets. Next, we have the Mets Middle School Soccer Team. We want to congratulate them on an exceptional undefeated season. Yes? Here's a highlight that I want to share with you. They just demonstrated outstanding skill and teamwork. They outscored their opponents 37 to 4 in this season, which is awesome. Coach Reinhardt is here tonight with her remarkable team, and I'd like to invite her to the podium to share a little bit about their journey and to recognize her talented athletes.
Hi. I thought I was gonna read this, so... Thank you. So, "In a season hampered by rain cancellations, illness, and injury, the team remained resilient and came together at every match with teamwork, tenacity, and grit. Chemistry and a consistent high level of skill across the roster matched with a growth mindset led the team to improve on their weaknesses as the season progressed. Goals were scored off corner kicks, a series of passes leading to a tap-in, headers off crosses, and shots from outside the box. Throw-ins were treated like free kicks, giving goes, trading positions, and moving to open spaces were commonplace. More important than the final record is the development of character and the friendships forged in their two months together. These boys have not only a great future in soccer, but also in life." And I'd like to also thank our athletic director, Nola Douglas, in the back. Our fabulous group of administrators. And all the parents, guardians, and siblings that came out during the season, both before, during, and after. Thank you. And I just want to add, the great thing about school sports is that anyone can participate, it doesn't matter if you live far away or close by, you just stay after school. Nobody has to pay an inscription, nobody pays for a uniform, you just show up, and if you make the team, you get to play. So it's a fantastic opportunity for all of our students, so thank you for providing that for us. So we have Luisa Barca, Jaden Olahu, Peter Caballero, who's celebrating his birthday today. You guys can come up. Come on up. Donovan Calvillo, Kevin Escobar, Lester Gutierrez, Miguel Guzman, Abed Cahir, Leonel Lemus, Ivan Maldonado, Alexis Martinez, Eric Medina, Alexandra Majano, Iker Melendez, Selvin Murillo, Jose Naharro, Felix Olguin, Lucas Oriana, Derek Pass, Christopher Ramos, Jonathan Reyes, Jefferson Rubio, and Christopher Zamora Flores. Coach Awusu is not with us today, but... Hi, Coach.
Wow, what a great-looking bunch. This is awesome. Very good, okay. Everybody ready? Okay, make sure it's one home in trouble right there. Okay, alright, I'll try to get high. Everybody ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Everybody. Yes. Okay. Yes. Yeah, he was like, 'cause he had to hold it down kinda low. Yeah. And both teams look like they genuinely enjoy playing with one another, so congratulations to all of you, and thanks for representing Manassas City Public Schools so very well. Thank you. Thank you. Can just have a couple more? Alright, you saw Ms. Miller a few moments ago, I'm gonna ask her to come back up. Lisa Miller. Oh, in the back, okay. We'd like to offer congratulations to Ms. Miller and her Osborne Journalism Students for being recognized by the Virginia High School League. Ms. Miller is here tonight, and I think you have... Do you have a few of your students here tonight?
Five.
Five, okay, come on up. Yeah. The journalism students that are here with her, come on up. Their recognitions include first-place ranking for their yearbook. They received superior ratings in theme, cover design, overall design, photography, headlines, and captions. According to Ms. Miller, the fact that the yearbook team earned a first-place ranking in this category is amazing because they only had a team of six who produced this outstanding work, so congratulations to you for that. Second-place ranking for the Osborne Today Morning Show, which received superior ratings for coverage, news writing, design, and graphics. And they also received second-place ranking for the Talon News website, which received superior ratings for news coverage, opinion writing, design, and understanding of copyright law. They also received second-place ranking for the Connections Literary Magazine, receiving superior ratings in originality and art selections. Congratulations to all of you, and to you. Okay. That's it. Thank you so much. Okay. So earlier this evening, we had the privilege of hosting an appreciation reception for Mr. Hollingsworth, Mrs. Brooks, and Mrs. Williams, who are all down here with us tonight. Each of these dedicated individuals has faithfully served Manassas City Public Schools as board members. Ms. Williams joined the board in 2017, while Mr. Hollingsworth and Ms. Brooks began their service in 2021. On behalf of the entire school community, we extend our heartfelt thanks for your commitment and your contributions. Although your time as board members has come to a close, we know you remain deeply vested as citizens of the City of Manassas, and your continued support will always be felt. There's a lot of work that goes into this. At this time, we would like to present each of you with special tokens of appreciation. We will hear additional remarks during board member comments, but again, thank you all so much for all that you've done for us. Thank you. Chair Seberg, that concludes our spotlights for tonight.
Okay, next on our agenda is board committee reports, and we have none of our standing committees will be reporting tonight. However, in School Board members' comments, you may hear some other committee reports that are not part of the School Board Standing Committee. Next up is citizens' comments. We have two different times tonight. First, we will go to regular citizens' comments, and then following citizens' comments, we will have a public hearing on the capital improvement plan. So I have some signed up. If you have not signed up and you wish to speak, there are forms down here. First up is Laura Tips.
Good evening, members of the School Board. My name is Laura, and I'm here today to address a pressing issue that affects both our students and their parents. As a parent, I find it increasingly difficult to stay informed about my child's education due to the lack of assessable assignments and remediation materials. Firstly, the absence of daily school reports is a significant concern. Without regular updates, parents are left in the dark about what their children are learning and how they are progressing. This lack of information makes it challenging for us to provide the necessary support at home. I propose that the school district implements a system where weekly packets are sent home every Friday and returned by the following Thursday. These packets should include study guides, test dates, and other relevant information. This approach would not only keep parents informed, but also help students stay organized and prepared. Moreover, the delay in assessing... accessing remediation activities is unacceptable. It should not take weeks to receive information on how to help our children improve in areas where they are struggling. Timely access to these materials is crucial for effective intervention and support. I have been working on helping my son for eight weeks and have talked to multiple people and have attended multiple meetings. The most frustrating part is no one has the same answer. We are a small school system, and staff being on the same page should not be this difficult. Luckily, I have been working with some great resources in the city. Did you know that recess is being used as a punishment in our elementary schools? Multiple families have shared that their children are being required to run, stand against a wall, or miss recess entirely when their behavior is deemed unacceptable. Virginia law clearly states that students should have access to recess as it is a vital part of their development. Denying students this opportunity not only contradicts state law, but also hinders their physical and social growth. Appropriate disciplinary measures should be clearly outlined in the school's code of conduct and communicated to parents. Effective alternatives to withholding recess could include writing referrals, notifying parents, or assigning lunch detention. Clear expectations and appropriate consequences should be shared transparently with parents and are essential for maintaining a supportive and constructive school environment. Parents are often called upon to be involved in their children's education, yet we are not given the necessary opportunities to do so when disciplinary practices are not clearly communicated. It is not too much to ask for a system where parents are informed and involved in the disciplinary process. If the School Board is so far removed from day-to-day tasks, then please allow Dr. Newman to oversee his staff without politics. This lackadaisical approach is not helping our students, teachers, or parents. Our tax dollars fund many educational programs such as...
Thank you, Ms. Tips. Because we have an agenda, we need to complete...
Yep, that's fine.
We ask that comments be limited to three minutes, and we do appreciate the time you have taken to be here.
Sure. Yeah, I'll email it.
I'll read the rest of it. Where is that?
Oh, right there.
I'm Lynn Forcal Green, and I'm just gonna read the last paragraph that she has as a courtesy. I'm a Manassas City resident. Our tax dollars fund many educational programs such as varsity tutors, yet these resources are not being adequately shared with parents. It is essential that we have access to these tools to better assist our children in their academic journey. In conclusion, I urge the School Board to consider these suggestions to improve communication and resource accessibility for parents. By doing so, we can work together to ensure our children receive the best possible education.
Ms. Forcal Green, could you please sign in?
Oh, yes ma'am.
Next up is Sarah Lamb.
My name is Sarah Lamb, and my son Jackson is a 5th grader at Mayfield. I hope I don't overlap too much, but my son's in the same class, so we have similar concerns. Starting out, discipline should not include recess. There are other ways to accomplish that purpose. The spirit of recess rules, they have an opportunity to disconnect from the focus and stress of school for a period of time, and I'm sure the excuse is they're still outside, but that's not the same thing. Especially considering recess is 10:30 to 10:55, and encore starts at 11:00. As a result, at least three to four days a week, their already short recess is cut short by seven to eight extra minutes. Moving on, my biggest concern is a lack of communication and lack of information for parents to help our kids at home. How difficult this has been just to get what were basic things for parents back when we were in school. We need to have access to all tests, quizzes, and assignments in a timely manner after they are created or completed. There should not be empty entries in Power School for assignments from October that still have not been entered. They then just load all at once, so it's a shock if grades aren't good because they haven't had access to anything or have anything come home, and there is zero volunteer communication when it comes to struggles. We have to ask. Teachers should be proactively offering retakes, and they are not. My son has been asking for weeks to retake things over a month ago. He requested a retake which wasn't offered for the most recent unit test, and they still have not gotten around to giving a retake of the previous unit test. And then, 10 and 11-year-olds are now expected to accurately remember information from two separate units? When I asked why they weren't receiving study guides for these tests, I was told they weren't permitted to and have to have specific permission from above. Not only no study guides, but when I asked how are they supposed to study at home, I was told that we should be going on the internet and finding study materials for them. They aren't allowed to bring home their laptops or classroom notebooks.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Lamb, and my son Jackson is a fifth grader at Mayfield. I hope I don't overlap too much, but my son's in the same class, so we have similar concerns. Starting out, discipline should not include recess. There are other ways to accomplish that purpose. The spirit of recess rules, they have an opportunity to disconnect from the focus and stress of school for a period of time, and I'm sure the excuse is they're still outside, but that's not the same thing, especially considering recess is 10:30 to 10:55 and encore starts at 11:00. As a result, at least three to four days a week, their already short recess is cut short by seven to eight extra minutes. Moving on, my biggest concern is the lack of communication and lack of information for parents to help our kids at home. How difficult this has been just to get what were basic things for parents back when we were in school. We need to have access to all tests, quizzes, and assignments in a timely manner after they are created or completed. There should not be empty entries in Power School for assignments from October that still have not been entered. They then just load all at once, so it's a shock if grades aren't good because they haven't had access to anything or have anything come home, and there is zero volunteer communication when it comes to struggles. We have to ask. Teachers should be proactively offering retakes, and they are not. My son has been asking for weeks to retake things from over a month ago. He requested a retake which wasn't offered for the most recent unit test, and they still have not gotten around to giving a retake of the previous unit test. And then 10 and 11-year-olds are now expected to accurately remember information from two separate units? When I asked why they weren't receiving study guides for these tests, I was told they weren't permitted to and have to have specific permission from above. Not only no study guides, but when I asked how are they supposed to study at home, I was told that we should be going on the internet and finding study materials for them. They aren't allowed to bring home their laptops or classroom notebooks, and I've found all the surrounding counties allow those. I was told they were to use Bobcat Block 30 minutes at the end of the day to study. It's not enough time to study for most kids, especially without some guidance. Then there's the fact that both remedial and advanced study is also happening in this block. Essentially, kids have to choose between getting the help they need or studying for a test, or they have to choose between advanced math and studying for a test. This will only serve to discourage kids from seeking that extra help on either end of the educational spectrum. It's also alarming to be told point-blank that the first time our children will see one word of homework that is not just reading will be high school. We obviously don't want hours of homework, but something maybe included in the packets Laura spoke of would be good, whether it's for a grade or not. Otherwise, we're setting them up for failure to show up in high school and have seven classes with homework like they've never, ever had to do before. It's putting them in a terrible position. When I was Jackson's age, we had projects and science projects and all kinds of things outside school to make that learning fun and reinforce that knowledge. I get frustrated talking to parents from every surrounding county that doesn't have these issues. They can bring home their notebooks and laptops and have projects and actual work to do. They send weekly emails and packets home to give parents the resources they need to study with their children. It doesn't help us that we don't get almost anything coming home, and if it does, it's weeks after the assignment or test, so going over it would be pointless with that time gap in between. Members of the board, it should not be this difficult. The teachers shouldn't have their hands tied so tightly about what they can offer and do. They need better training on the new policies. Something has to change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jen Metcalf.
Good evening. My name is Jen Metcalf. I am the instructional facilitator at Hayden Elementary. I am also an MEA member. These comments are a reflection of my role in the instructional process. As a division, MCPS was well-prepared for the rollout of VLA, Virginia Literacy Act, and Benchmark Advance, as the K-6 coordinator Laura Emden led us through very purposeful and thoughtful professional learning beginning in January of 2024. Dr. Newman started our year off with a quote from Mike Tomlin, a little shout-out. "It's not what you're capable of, it's what you're willing to do." And many times, things that are best for kids are not the easiest for adults. During community comments at the last meeting, it was also stated that our students are vulnerable. As educators, we are entrusted with the unwavering responsibility to confront and eliminate vulnerability. It is our professional duty to build resilience in our students, and my teachers are capable and willing to do this. It was also stated that our students don't receive the level of support they need. We have a significant amount of resources in this division, including human resources. The teachers know their students the best, and we bring all of our collective knowledge together to the CLST table. All our students are worthy of receiving powerful, worthwhile, and rigorous instruction. Students are all thinkers and doers. This curriculum requires that of them even when we have not. Teachers are being tasked with returning to a level of rigor and complexity that our students deserve. This is not and cannot be unrealistic. We must make it happen for the sake of our children and our community. If you are looking for the challenges in this reality of VLA and Benchmark, you'll find them. Doing something hard, being willing to do something hard, takes grit. You have to be willing, and then you will see the opportunities. We need partnership. We need you to see it. Don't take our word for it. Come see my teams at the planning table. Come dig deep into the resources with us. Come see what we do and how the teachers do it all. Then, please go see the lessons in action. We are figuring it all out. So, what a great time for you to join us and see the process from the start. We have made the collective choice to focus on the common goal, and I can't wait for you to see what is happening. Lastly, in the words of Beverly Sills, "There are no shortcuts to any place worth going." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Metcalf. Amy Keen.
Good evening. I'm a third-grade teacher at Hayden Elementary. I have a letter here in support of Benchmark curriculum. Dear school board and colleagues, I am writing to express my strong support for the new Benchmark curriculum adopted this school year. This curriculum presents an exciting opportunity for Manassas City learners to finally compete on equal footing with students in other school districts. The Benchmark curriculum is designed to foster critical thinking and intellectual growth, equipping our students with the skills and knowledge they need to thrive. For students with disabilities, this curriculum offers a chance to experience the same level of rigor and rich language that our non-disabled peers have long enjoyed. This is a significant step forward in ensuring equity and inclusion within our educational system. For over a decade, our students have faced gaps in educational quality. The Benchmark curriculum has the potential to close the gaps and to move the needle in ways we haven't seen in years. While accommodations and modifications will be necessary for some learners, the depth of quality of the content provided by Benchmark is unmatched by any curriculum we have seen in the past. I recognize that implementing this new curriculum represents a significant shift in teaching methods. However, it is a shift that is crucial for the success of our students. We cannot afford to wait any longer. This change is needed now more than ever. I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the challenges that we are facing as we navigate the new curriculum and teaching methods. I truly understand that adopting, adapting to these changes require a great deal of effort, patience, and flexibility. It can be difficult, and I deeply appreciate the dedication and hard work of my colleagues despite the challenges. That said, I've already seen remarkable growth in our students, specifically in their ability to engage in thoughtful conversation, generate creative ideas, and demonstrate greater stamina in their learning. These outcomes are encouraging, and they show that despite the hurdles, the work we are doing is truly making a difference. As educators, we constantly adjust our teaching styles and expectations to meet the needs of our students. I believe that these changes are ultimately benefiting them. The key to this shift is having faith in their abilities. We believe that our students can rise to the challenge, and they often exceed our expectations. I'm hopeful that we can continue to support one another throughout this transition. With time, I believe these adjustments will feel more natural for all of us. Together, we can move forward, not just for the sake of change, but for the future of our students. Thank you for your continued commitment to our student success. I'm confident that the work we are doing will pay off, even if it takes time to realize that. Thank you. From a teacher who cares.
It was from you, right? No, it was not from you. A letter from...okay.
But I saw it.
Okay. Great. Can you email that to us?
Yes.
Thank you. Before I go to the capital improvement plan, I just want to verify with Ms. Shaniqua. Did you want to speak to the capital improvement program or regular citizens' comments?
Capital improvement.
Okay. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the Manassas City of Manassas Public Schools FY 2630 capital improvement plan. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that the comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please note that matters which are properly the subject of closed meetings, such as those related to the performance of school personnel or individual student concerns, may not be discussed during this time. And I welcome to the podium Shaniqua Williams.
Good evening. Just forgive me in advance, I got my eyes dilated a little bit ago, so I can't see my phone. Good evening, Chairman Seberg, school board members, and Dr. Newman. My name is Shaniqua Williams, and I serve the students at Metz Middle School as one of the school counselors there, and I reside in the Brentsville District of Prince William County. Please forgive me in advance, as I'm still learning how things are done here in Manassas City, but when I was reviewing the capital improvement plan, I thought it was worthy to add some thoughts to the topic. Among the vast list of benefits investing in our school district's capital improvement plan is critical...it is critical for us to remember that it fosters a positive educational environment and investing supports student success. It's no secret that capital improvement plans typically focus on upgrading facilities, addressing safety and maintenance issues, and creating better and more engaging spaces for our students to learn. We know that these enhancements directly contribute to the quality that our students have in their education. They provide safe and well-equipped buildings, and they provide environments where our teachers will teach and our students can thrive in their learning. Investing in improved facilities have a profound impact on student attendance as well. And as a school counselor, who's one of the many people directly involved in attendance plans, I know that finding ways to get students to come to school is always our focus. When schools are inviting, well-maintained, and free of structural or environmental concerns, students are more likely to regularly attend school. And studies have shown that students feel more valued and motivated in well-cared-for environments, which leads to more engagement in their work. Because I work at Metz, the proposed enhancements will change our entire school environment and our school community. I imagine now what it would be like to have full bleachers, so families and students can all sit together and support their friends and students. Furthermore, since all students in Manassas will come through Metz, it's important to note that this investment will affect students in a far greater way than we can even begin to understand. The CIP is a step forward in enhancing the quality of education by improving our facilities and resources, but it also directly impacts our students in a big way. I don't know if this board will be deciding if they will agree with the CIP or if they'll only support a portion of it, but I urge you to consider the bigger picture. The picture that will be here after you no longer serve in this capacity, but the students and our future students and their families will still be here. Invest in them. Please consider them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the CIP? I will move along then to our consent agenda. Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mr. Hollingsworth. The school board, the city of Manassas, approved the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. On the discussion agenda tonight, we have a discussion about university instructors... university instructors. Mr. Craig Goffeller, Deputy Superintendent, and Mr. Ed Stevenson will provide information about a partnership with university instructors to target student learning needs at the secondary level. Mr. Goffeller.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, I get to talk about a partnership that we are entering into with university instructors. So to talk about the support that we're going to be providing our students, I just want to just provide a little bit of background. MCPS, as you know, we've talked about, has made substantive progress over the last few years at our oral literacy. We have shared that through our PALS data that we have come and shared with the board. Our cycle that works has improved our curriculum resources, our elementary academic performance, and our high school graduation rates. But we still have a significant need remains at the secondary level with closing the gaps that we have with achievement. And so when we look at our language arts and literacy, our mathematics and science, we want to, with this partnership, provide a more targeted support plan for our students at both Metz and Osborne. So the strategies for addressing the MCPS needs, when we think about...we hear a lot about the all-in Virginia, we hear about high-dose tutoring. And so the goal of this partnership with university instructors is to provide high-dose tutoring for small groups of students, both throughout the day and also after school at Metz. And so when we think about that, we'll be using, and I'll be talking more specifically about this later in the presentation, but we want to make sure that we're providing the resources, the targeted support for our students to close those achievement gaps that exist with our students. It also, with this partnership, provides an instructional partnership with our pipeline for growing students...I'm sorry, growing our staffing, particularly around some of our hard-to-fill staffing. University instructors will be helping us to provide...filling the gaps with our special education teachers, which have been hard-to-fill areas, and providing support for those teachers over the next semester. So let me talk a little bit about university instructors and who they are. They have over 30 years of educational experience, and they have been very impactful in working with both K-12 school partners. We will be working with them at the secondary level as our initial partnership at the middle school and high school. They are locally based, motivated, and caring professionals that have really...have been provided the training and will be provided the support all along the way as they provide our student support here in Manassas City. They are in Virginia. They have been working, and they currently are working with 56 districts in Virginia. They are the largest provider of instructional in-person services here in Virginia. They have long partnerships. They are currently supporting 136 schools and, as I said, 56 districts across the state, which equates to 850 instructors. And the current partnerships include Virginia Beach, Richmond City, Loudoun, Portsmouth, and Norfolk. So there's some pretty large school divisions that they are currently working in and also seeing success. So a little bit about what they do. They will both recruit individuals that will support our students, but also provide the support to help build their capacity to make sure that they have the background, the learning, and the professional development to help our students be successful. So they recruit teachers, they vet them, they provide them training, they make sure that they are qualified to work with our students. So for example, you have a teacher that we're working with our students in Algebra I. They make sure that those teachers that they'll be sending us, that they'll be working with our students are...have a background in mathematics and that can work effectively with our students in Algebra I, for example. And so we're working with them. They'll be providing training. They will also be receiving training for us in current resources that we are using. They will be using our resources and be providing support with university instructors as they work with our students on a weekly basis in our schools. So the program implementation, this is not a one-size-fits-all approach. We have been working with university instructors over the last several weeks to develop a plan for...specifically for Osborne and specifically for Metz. And it's going to be very customized. They'll be a part of the team, working with...as I said, during Metz, we'll be working with students during the school day, and then also working with them after school. And then at Osborne High School, they will be working with students in the core contents during the school day. And just to give you, as we talked...began talking with them about the partnership, one of the things that we asked them was, what evidence do you have that you have been successful in the districts that you have been working in, in the schools? And so the evidence that they have is 97% of students who participated in the full instructional support, which is 50-plus sessions with university instructors, increased their state assessment score in math, 97% of those students did, and 83% of students who had 50 or more sessions showed growth in the language arts and reading. And so some of the advantages that we have here in partnering with them, they will be, as I said, vetting and training staff and making sure that there is faithful implementation. They will be coming alongside our school-based administrators to make sure the program that we are designing with them is implemented with fidelity. They will be coordinating important logistics, scheduling. They will also be gathering data on our students and will be able to monitor progress in real time, our students that they're working with on a regular basis. And it also creates an additional source, as I said, a pipeline for recruitment and hiring for future MCPS educators. As I said, they'll be working with us to help identify staff that will be serving as special education teachers with us. The goal is to...they will become alongside of them and help them get their provisional license, and then they will become an MCPS employee. So the plan is to partner with university instructors. We'll be providing high-dose tutoring from Metz and Osborne during the school day at both schools, and then after school as well at Metz. The focus at Metz Middle School will be during the day will be math and reading, and then after school will be math and science. During Osborne, we will be providing support for all of the four core contents, in addition to providing during-school tutoring for our avid students. And we're looking at how do we pay for this? We're paying for it with unrealized...realized savings through unfilled vacancies. We have readjusted some things in the student achievement budget to make sure that we are able to provide additional support for our students. This partnership involves 20 instructors from university instructors, and the partnership will begin...for our tutoring portion of this partnership will begin on January 13th. And we are currently in planning on that. We've had weekly meetings. We had our second weekly meeting... weekly meeting with University Instructors today. We've had multiple planning meetings before that with Dr. Chapman and Ms. Finnegan to make sure that we are ready to receive these instructors and to make a difference for our students next semester. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Looking to my right, to my left? Mrs. Breja?
Thank you. I do have a question, as it turns out. How are kids going to be selected for the high dosage tutoring?
Yeah, so we will be selecting students based on their, their data that's happening in, for example, if they're not doing well, any remediation for a test. In language arts, we'll be looking at our students that are below grade level in reading, will get that additional support. And so we will be using unit assessment data, performance tasks, the things that teachers are already collecting on our students, and then teachers and staff, administration will be working together to group those students to make sure that the students who have that greatest need are getting the greatest amount of support.
So for, I can see how during school, offering the tutoring, it's easy to get, or fairly easy to get the kids to be there and participate, but after school, how are we ensuring that the kids who need it are going to be there?
So I think we all know that Ms. Finnegan can, can get kids after school. And so, you know, we will be working with parents, coordinating with parents, talking with parents, and making sure that there's, there, we're getting students to stay after school. We currently have students that are already working with after-school programs at Metz. This will only enhance that, and we've had very good attendance with students that are attending the after-school programs at Metz, so I don't anticipate it being an issue. But again, we'll be working closely with parents to make sure that they are, they know what the need is for their students, and then making sure that, that they are seeing the value in that, in having the students stay after school.
Thank you, that's all.
Anyone else?
I, yes.
Mrs. Williams?
I do, thank you. I, I believe we have done something like this in the past, and will you clarify for me, University Instructors, that's the name of the company?
Correct.
Okay. And then, one more question. I, I like the statistics, ninety-seven percent of students who participated did gain, gained on their assessment scores for math and eighty-three percent for reading. Did, was the question ever asked, what percentage, given their experience and their, the work that they're doing in other school systems, what was the percentage of their EL students that they were tutoring?
I don't know the percentage of EL students that they were tutoring, I'd have to go back and ask them.
Okay, that's the only other question I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Ball?
Hi. I was just a little confused or curious about Slide eight, the fifty-plus sessions, is that our goal, to get identified kids fifty sessions in the second half of the year?
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at three times a week?
Yes, we're actually looking at more than that, we're looking at students, because our instructors will be on, onsite Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And so we are looking to have the, for consistency, we're looking to have our instructors working with those students that have the greatest need every single day, every school day.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gaffeler, we're looking at twenty instructors. What are the qualifications of the instructors, and how will it look day-to-day? Will they be, for lack of a better term, answering to teachers? How is that going to look?
So let me ask you the first, the first question first, and, and so they have to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree, and they also have to take, in terms of them working with secondary students, they have to take assessments. And so they have to do well on those assessments before University Instructors would put them forward as a viable candidate for us to have, working with our students, so that's the first thing. And they will be working side-by-side with teachers. And so they'll be working with our teachers, they'll be collecting data, they'll be sharing that data, we, we sign a data-sharing agreement with University Instructors, so we're able to share information about our students, they're able to share the data they're collecting on progress monitoring of our students. And so we will be having those conversations on a regular basis as a team of teachers. Our goal is that if a, that the university instructor assigned to a group of students is communicating regularly with a teacher about their progress.
And then, can you explain how they're going to work in special education? Because you mentioned that and that we've got several hard-to-fill positions, what, can you give us some specifics on what that is?
Sure. So they will be recruiting teachers who want to become, or instructors who want to become special education teachers. And so what they will be doing in partnership with us is they will be recruiting and vetting candidates that want to be a special education teacher. They will then be assigned to one of our vacancies that we have in special education, and then they will be working with those instructors, providing support, and they will become a regular, the student's regular teacher for special education, with, very similar to I teach, that we're currently doing. The only difference is, is that they will be providing the support in terms of helping them to get their provisional license, and they will be helping them along the way with the goal of, once they get their provisional license in special education, then they will be transferred, essentially become our staff member. Right now, they'll be working for University Instructors in coordination and collaboration with us, but once they get that, they will become our, our teacher.
Sorry. Yep, there we go, sorry, can't see the light from this direction. So when those individuals are with us, they're not, do they have any academic training background in working with special education students?
I can't answer that question because they may or they may not. We may have individuals that, that they recruit that have a background in working with special education students that just haven't, don't have their license. We may have someone very similar, who may be a career switcher, who wants to become a special education teacher, and they're going to go through this route to become a special education teacher. So until they identify those teachers and, and, and vet them, and then pass them to Manassas City as identified teachers that they want to use, to assign to our programs here, I can't answer that question until they actually recruit.
Okay. And then, still speaking on the special education side, when we have, when there are provisional teachers, teachers who have a provisional license to teach special education, they have a mentor.
Yes.
Will these instructors have an MCPS mentor, or a University Instructors mentor, or both?
They will have both. We will be providing them support here in Manassas City, but there will be a, a program manager that will be onsite in Manassas City on a weekly basis, working in our schools with our teachers, observing our teachers, observing the instructors, providing feedback, making sure that they have the resources and are able to get whatever they need to be successful, so it'll be both.
Okay, and then just one last question. The University Instructors, will they be part of CLTs?
Yes.
Okay, and so they'll have that time set aside to be part of CLTs, to engage in that discussion and that planning?
Correct. It will not, they will not be working in isolation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffeler, and thank you for pursuing this creative way to fill the critical need that we have in our schools.
Right, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize some people in the audience. We have representatives from Manassas Education Association, President Anna Di Maria, and also Ms. Tammy Potts, and also Shaniqua Williams, representing Virginia Education Association. Thank you for being here. I'll also recognize Mr. Tim Di Maria, Commissioner of Revenue, holding up the back wall back there, thank you. And I'd also like to recognize School Board Member-elect Dana Miles, Dr. Zella Jones, and Ms. Diana Brown. They are fresh, well, we are fresh, me included, being sworn in last night and ready to go to work for you, January one. Thank you. All right, moving along to the action agenda, we have many items this evening. I'll start first with curriculum and instruction approval of the academic calendars for school year twenty-five and twenty-six, and twenty-six and twenty-seven. Mr. Gaffeler, are you doing that one? Or Mr. Stevenson? Are we just going to, okay, we have the results, we have Option A and Option B, and is there any discussion? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Chair.
Excuse me?
Ms. Breja.
Okay.
I would briefly like to make the case for Option B, if that's okay. I am supporting Option B today, I'm encouraging my other board members to do the same, and my main reason for doing so, I think it, I do think it is best for our kids and our division goals, and is most in line with our strategic plan. My concern about Option A is that the start and end dates do not align with our regional norms, including not just the county, but also Manassas Park, which creates unnecessary hardship for certain parts of our school community. I believe these hardships outweigh the question of simple preference that was reflected in the survey results. Having start and end dates that are out of sync with our region creates unnecessary childcare difficulties for our staff members who live either in the county or in Manassas Park and have school-aged children. Local summer camps and childcare options orient themselves around the county's start and end dates, which leaves our families of younger children in an unnecessarily difficult position when they have to find a week of childcare at the end of the year that is generally not available, and because it creates unnecessary hardship for our students who participate in regional programs such as Gov. School, dual enrollment, and the alternative school at Independ, at Independence. You have, for every decision we make, we have to consider both the majority opinion and the question of impact. Sometimes those line up, but given the results of the survey, which did show majority preference for Option A, this is an example of when these two things do not align, which does make the job harder, and anybody who wants to vote for Option A, I don't hold that against you. But in this instance, I do believe it is best for our division to follow the impact and to support our staff and families who are reliant upon commercial childcare, and to support our students who participate in regional programs. To use an analogy, to me, this is like when a group of six people are trying to decide where to eat, all six people are fine to eat steak, but five people are excited to try the new seafood restaurant in town, but one person is allergic to fish. Given the negative impact on that one person, even though, yes, that person is technically outvoted, I think most people would readily agree to accommodate them by switching to the steak restaurant. So I think this is similar, I think the negative impact on our families with young kids, the negative impact on our staff with young kids, and the negative impact on our students in regional programs, including the kids who attend Independence, is too great. I believe we should support these folks, even though they were not the majority position in the survey. So I believe Option B is our best option to support our division goals and our strategic plan, and I hope others join me, but it's up to all.
Is there any other discussion? Yeah. Vice Chair, sorry. I just wanted to speak about Option A and Option B. Option A and Option B were almost virtually identical. In fact, when you look compared month to month, seven of the months of the school year were exactly the same, but as Ms. Breja said, Option A has a earlier start date, earlier end date, Option B has a slightly later start date, slightly later end date. I prefer Option B for the same reasons Ms. Breja does, I feel we need to be aligned for our students who are in special programs. It's not just Gov. School, it's not just Independence, it's a lot of our students who receive special education services that, as a school division, we are too small to provide. So we work and partner with Prince William County. Those special education students who rely on services through Prince William County have an entire week where they go without services at the beginning of the year. And they lose a week of services at the end of the school year because our school calendar doesn't quite align. I recognize that we're in Manassas City, we're not Prince William County, we're not Loudoun, we're not any of our surrounding school divisions, but when I think of some of our most needy students, our special education students, them losing two weeks of instruction, one week at the beginning of the year, and one week at the end of the year, can really be a huge setback, because the students who rely on services that we as a school division cannot provide really rely on those services. Their families rely on those services. They need them to succeed. So from my opinion, I prefer Option B, but I recognize the community, the survey response was in large part Option A.
Mrs. Ball?
Yes, thank you. I believe in community input, we work hard to get it, it doesn't come easy for our school division in particular. You know, survey results said Option A, and I feel like if we, you know, don't follow the will of the majority, why, why are we asking? You know, and I feel like a lot of our community members are going to feel the same way. I feel like if we do follow what the survey suggests, then maybe it will make more people fill out surveys. That's where I am.
Thank you. Anybody down here?
I agree with Ms. Ball.
Thank you. I also agree with Ms. Ball, I think if we're going to have a survey, we really need to lean towards the results of those surveys. And I understand what Mrs. Stevens and Ms. Breja are saying about regional programs, but perhaps we should have said something about that before we took the survey. And I do have personal experience in a regional program, I have two students that have gone through Governor's School, four years of Governor's School, and where they went to Osborne, you know, in the mornings, and then they go to Gov. School in the afternoon, but not for the first week or two. It was totally fine. It was a good opportunity for those students to have some extra time to get used to the school year starting again, and it was not a hindrance at all. It may be different for special education students. But I will be voting against Option B, that's the motion, I would support Option A, because that is the survey, what the survey is leaning toward. Anybody else? Can I get a motion?
You want to make a motion?
Chair.
Yes.
I, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve Option A for the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendars.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Ball, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve Option A for the twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendars. Is there any discussion?
Chair, real quick?
Yes.
I am going to abstain from voting, because I don't, I, I support both.
Okay, all right. Chair. Can I also say, I'm not going to abstain. You know, I respect everyone's opinion, and I think that everyone has valid points, but, and maybe we'll learn for next year or the next cycle, but, so, I just didn't, I want to say there's no hard feelings on how everyone votes, but for me, it's about the survey. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of Option A?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion carries Option A. Next business, School Board, oh, it was five-two. Five, four, four-two.
Four-two-one.
Four-two-one. Four in favor of A, two opposed, one abstention. School Board Operating Protocol. Mrs. Brooks, do you have anything you want to say about this? How long you guys have been working on this, the Personnel Committee?
I, we have been working on this, we've put a lot of time and effort and thought into this, and come to the table, gone away, did our homework, come back to the table, and tried to really make this something that we all felt was well-rounded and articulate and not difficult to understand what our responsibilities were.
Very good. And then we also had a work session on November twenty-sixth to confirm this and to further work out some other things.
And we also talked at the School Board Retreat to discuss it.
Yes, we did. So, is there any other, well, actually, can I get a motion?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the School Board Operating Protocol and Statement of Ethical Standards and Good Governance as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Breja, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the School Board Operating Protocol and Statement of Ethical Standards and Good Governance as presented. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. Okay. Now, up on policies. Section J, Students. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. As I'm sure everyone is well aware, the Governor put out an executive order prohibiting the use of personal electronic communication. the use of personal electronic communication devices in K through 12 public schools. We crafted a new policy that went hand in hand with the code of conduct to address the new guidance from the governor. The policy we crafted was taken almost in its entirety from the actual guidance, and we've had several robust conversations about it and deep discussions on what it means and how it impacts all of our students, both when they're in our buildings during the school day, when they're on school buses, when they're on field trips, when they're at extracurricular activities.
Would you like to make a motion?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve policy J E D A, D A, portable electronic communication devices as presented.
Set. Was that Spall?
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Spall, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve policy J E D A, portable electronic communication devices as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Do we have a code of conduct?
It is, Chair, it is reflected in our action agenda on board docs, but it's not on the printed.
Can I get a motion for the revised 24, 25 student code of conduct?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the revised code of conduct under section J, students. As presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board approve the code of conduct revision for the 24, 25 student code of conduct.
Section J.
Yeah. Just to change for section J, the cell phone. Or portable electronic devices. Any other, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.
Okay. Last on our action agenda is the CIP. Can I get a motion?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the F Y 20, 26, 20, 30 capital improvement plan as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the F Y 20, 26, 20, 30 capital improvement plan as presented. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Spall?
Can we clarify that, per the speaker earlier, that there is no deletion to the scoreboard bleachers for Mets for proposed fiscal year 2026? That remains. Just so the public knows.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm going to read it again. I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the F Y 20, 26, 20, 30 capital improvement plan as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. School board members' comments, and I'll go first to our student representatives, starting with Mrs., Ms. Bland.
Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody had a nice Thanksgiving break. I just wanted to invite everyone to come out to Jenny Dean on Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:30 for cocoa, cookies, and a movie. I will be there volunteering with the Osborne Interact Club, so come say hi. I want to thank all the students, parents, volunteers, teachers, and staff, and most of all, Mr. Godwin, for making Osborne CTE Night a success. And just as a reminder to all seniors, that as we approach the end of our second-to-last semester, keep going and persevere, but also, don't forget to step back, take a minute to breathe as we receive our college acceptance letters, and cherish our last six months with Manassas Public Schools. Thank you to Mrs. Brooks, Mrs. Williams, and Mr. Hollingsworth. Your time on the school board has not gone unnoticed, and we wish you the best on your future endeavors. On that note, I would like to welcome our new board members that will be joining us in January. Just as a reminder to all, oh, wait, no, I was going to say this part, never mind, never mind. I hope everyone has an amazing winter break. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Ms. Breeden?
I would also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Hollingsworth, Ms. Brooks, and Mrs. Williams. Although I'm sad to see you all go, I know you will go on to do other great things, so good luck out there. And then the events coming up is Osborne's having a bonfire in the back parking lot next Monday, December 16th, from 5:30, 7:30 p.m., so that should be fun. And then additionally, I would like to bring to everyone's attention something on behalf of an Osborne student, which is a video contest held by Keep Manassas Beautiful. This year's theme is food waste composting, and the purpose is to educate and excite students about environmental issues in a three to five-minute video. The contest will begin January 1st of 2025 and end April 1st, with a first-place prize of $500, so that's an incentive. More information can actually be found on the Osborne website if you Google "Second Annual Keep Manassas Beautiful" video contest. So I just wanted to spread the word and encourage others to do so as well. And then lastly, I would like to note the various donation boxes scattered around Osborne. I believe there's a feminine hygiene donation box, as well as a veteran canned food jar, so please stop by and give back this holiday season, and that's all. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Breeden. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Seberg. First, I want to congratulate Mets football and soccer team again, as well as Osborne's journalism team for their, their recent success. This past weekend, I enjoyed coming out for the parade and seeing the community. That, those are some of the high points of being an elected official. I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to the board members with whom I've had the privilege of serving with. Sanford Williams, Alec Ichball, my friend Tim DiMaria there in the back, and all my esteemed members seated here today. I, your unwavering support and patience have been invaluable, and I truly appreciate each one of you. We, as we welcome in, I also like to welcome all the new board members. If I could offer any advice, embrace your true authentic self as you come to this governance team. In today's political landscape, where misinformation is creating division, fostering clear intentions will be key to building trust, not only on this board, but throughout our community. With that, I'd like to say thank you to my wife, Shirley, and my mother out there, Reverend Hollingsworth. And again, I appreciate all the love and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks, your turn.
Thank you. I will start also by congratulating all of our, you know, wonderful students and staff, teachers that were here tonight, the football team, the soccer team, the journalists, the artists. We have so many great things in Manassas. You know, I've had a great time being a part of all of this, and it's just going to be a different part. Thank you to everyone for all of your appreciation and gratitude and, you know, kindness that you've shown tonight and throughout, you know, all this time. Welcome to the new board members, and, you know, thank you to all my other fellow board members and past board members. It's been my pleasure to serve our community during my time with the school board. I'm so grateful for being able to have had this opportunity to work with our schools in this manner. I look forward to the chapters ahead. I'm very proud of Manassas City Public Schools and our community. I, I can't wait to see what great things happen, and I look forward to my new chapter in life, and I'm sure it's going to involve at least a garden with Manassas City Schools, because, you know, great things are happening in Manassas City Schools, and all of our students are doing great things, and I'm very proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
Okay, usually my comments are very short, but tonight, they're probably going to be a little longer than usual. First, I want to thank Ms. Bland and Ms. Breeden for, for every, your comments and thanking us, and you will miss us, I know. We will miss you, but I assure you, we'll be around and we will see you again. The Christmas card, I look forward to that every year, getting the Christmas card, knowing that it was drawn by one of our students. I really don't recall us ever voting on them like we did this time. We had them all laid out, and we picked one, two, three. It was, it was a great experience. So I'm looking forward to getting that in the mail. The snow day video, Mrs. Spall, that was a great idea, and I loved it. I loved watching the results. So thank you for that idea. It was, it was a wonderful thing to see how talented our students can be from elementary school all the way to high school. The Osborne High School Journalism Award, I think that's fantastic, and congratulations to them. I'm really excited about the Mets football and soccer teams being undefeated. When I first got on the board, the, at that point in time, there was separation between Met Sports and Osborne Sports, and over my tenure being here, I've watched the connection together, and I think that has really proven to be very successful, so I'm glad that transition happened. And then, as I sit here, of course, I have comments that I am going to read as well. So I am filled with gratitude and reflection as I prepare to close this chapter of my service on the school board of eight years ago. I ran for this position as a parent who wanted to be, to better understand how our school district worked and to play a role in shaping the, in shaping its future. At that time, my boys were in middle school, and like many parents, I wanted to ensure they and every child had access to the best education possible. Now my sons have graduated, and I had decided not to seek a third term back in, when was that, May, June? I'm not sure how long ago it was. But the journey has been challenging and rewarding. Over these years, I've had the privilege of working alongside dedicated colleagues and staff who share a passion for education and a commitment to all of our students. We achieved remarkable milestones, from hiring a superintendent to the expansion of our CTE. It has grown, it has established, it has grown tremendously. And I was even here when we, we established the Governor's STEM Academy. We were one of the only high schools to receive that designation in comparison to all of our surrounding districts. That was a real accomplishment for Osborne High School. We also began the development of the new Jenny Dean Elementary School, which has come to life, a project that represents our vision for the future of education in this community. I'm looking forward to its groundbreaking ceremony coming up soon. Together, we've also faced incredible challenges, including navigating the unprecedented complexities of the COVID-19 pandemic. It tested our resolve and required us to think creatively and work tires, tirelessly to support our students, teachers, and families. I'm proud of our efforts to invest in our athletic programs and fine arts, recognizing that education is not just about academics, but also about fostering creativity, teamwork, and personal growth. These investments are a testament of our belief that every student deserves opportunities to excel in all areas of their education. Serving on this board has been an honor and a privilege. It has allowed me to advocate for students, collaborate with passionate leaders, and contribute to the progress of our district. While my time on this board is coming to an end, my commitment to education and to this community will continue in other ways. And I want to thank you all, from the bottom of my heart, to the staff, to the community, to the voters, to my friends, to my family, and I look forward to seeing the many things that lie ahead for our students and our schools with our new board coming in. So thank you all. It's been a tremendous pleasure.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brezha?
I would first like to start off and offer the congratulations, of course, to our very talented student athletes with their incredible, exceptional seasons. I knew the seasons were going well, but very glad to hear it went that well. Our creative kiddos who contributed to the greeting card design contest and the video contest, and of course, the Osborne High School Journalism Department. And I would also, of course, like to offer additional recognition, recognition and express my personal gratitude to members, Williams, Brooks, and Hollingsworth, each of whom stepped up to serve. Let me remind everybody, when they decided to serve on school board was in 2020. They decided to do this in the tumultuous days of the pandemic. It would have been much easier for each of you, in your own personal capacities, to have decided not to do that. But this is, it truly speaks to your commitment to your community, that you stepped into that moment and that you stayed all four years to this moment, to this, your last regular meeting. I admire your dedication to have given you, to have given us and this whole community four years of your lives during a very difficult season. So thank you to all three of you for that. I cannot wait to see you around town in this ten-square-mile city that we've got. In other news, I do have some business to cover. Since our last meeting, I attended a few notable events and wanted to share them with the board. In my official capacity as the GTAC Liaison, the Gifted and Talented Advisory Commission Liaison, I attended their last meeting on November 18th, which also, I would like to highlight, included a brief student showcase from the GT Kids at Baldwin. The student showcase included a demonstration of a water filtration system that actually worked. I drank the water myself, and I'm still here. So, great job to our students. The annual GTAC report was included on today's consent, consent agenda. I hope everyone got a chance to read it. I would like to highlight a few things with, from that report. One thing that I'm very excited about is a summer enrichment program that is apparently in the works. So I'm really looking forward to look, learning more about that as it takes shape. This would be a very exciting opportunity for our students and community. The GTAC report also makes several recommendations for improvements, and one I would like to highlight is the committee's recommendation for a science fair to give students an opportunity to prepare a project that complies with later Gov. School admission requirements. According to the report, the last science fair was prior to the pandemic, so, speaking for myself, I think this is a great idea for many reasons, and I look forward to seeing what is done with that recommendation. This committee recently set its membership. At the last meeting, they discussed how their current committee membership lacks representation from parents of gifted elementary students. There's lots of representation of parents for, for Mets and Osborne, but maybe they determined there was only a single member who had an elementary-age kid in the gifted program. So if you are a parent of an identified gifted elementary student, please consider joining the committee and sharing your perspective. GTAC, like I believe all of our advisory committees, are also open to the public, so if you are someone who has, you know, some previous experience with gifted education, maybe you're retired or something like that, your perspective is also welcome. You may find more information about them and about how to join on the MCPS website. Other attended events since our last meeting included the Safe and Healthy Schools Advisory Committee meeting, which I attended as a parent and not as a liaison, so I will let member Spall report on that. The Book Fair Community Night at Baldwin, the V SBA Conference with my current and future, most of my future colleagues, the CTE Expo Night, the Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors Annual Holiday Party, the Very Cold Santa Lights Manassas, and the Greater Manassas Christmas Parade, and of course, the swearing-in ceremony for our three new incoming members, or, and four members who are re-upping their commitment. It is a busy time of year. I could spend a lot of time talking about each of these events, but suffice it to say that each has been an opportunity to better understand and enjoy and appreciate this school community and what it has to offer. The next time this body convenes, it will be a new year. There will be, and there will be a new board. I'm very excited for the next chapter. I wish everyone who celebrates a very Merry Christmas, and everyone out there a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Mrs. Spall?
Okay, this is, if this was a Facebook post, it would be titled TLDR. I'll try to go quickly, though. I want to thank the speakers for the positive response to Benchmark Advance and for invitation to participate in CLTs and classroom implementation. Ms. Miller for journalism, Coach Hogan for Mets Middle School, the Mets Soccer and their growth mindset, and also, if anybody goes home to watch, Happy Birthday Peter. Let's see. I believe in inclusion and participation, so I want to thank everyone who entered the holiday card and the snow day video contest. I want to remind people that the communications audit needs focus groups, so if you'd like to be a member of a focus group, it's one-time only, you can contact Ms. Garza to be on that, which is a audit that seems to be progressing. For our board member comment time, we plan to start
For our Board Member Comment Time, we plan to start to report on our attendance at various events in and around schools. To be close to the end, I'll say, the parade and all that stuff is, is fun. It's great, and it's very meaningful for someone who grew up around here to see how much it's sustained and grown. I am grateful for the opportunity to relay some information that may not otherwise find its way to the general public. In 2007, I started serving the then Student Health Advisory Board after a very sad rash of unexpected student deaths, which occurred over a short timeframe, so I've tried to remain in their affairs or involved in their affairs since its inception. Last week at the quarterly meeting, Mr. Chris Fuller, Supervisor of Security for MCPS, reported on the, to the Safe and Healthy Schools Advisory Committee, which is the new name, on our safety upgrades in all MCPS schools. He discussed truancy, reducing activity in the hallways during class, as well as crisis response manuals, as his main priorities for the year. And we have received already at least one email from a staff member that says that, you know, they see a big difference since he's been here in the last five months. Mr. Fuller also seeks ideas or concerns by phone or email if you need a way to express a noticeable increase in our efforts or a way to discuss concerns. It was also reported that there's a new position to begin in our city's social services. I believe the title is Harm Reduction Specialist for Community Engagement. As a priority, this position will help McKinney-Vento students, but it was mentioned and bears repeating that through the program or the specialist, I think both, they will have access, they, those folks have access to med bags and firearm locks, which are available for distribution. Lock and Talk is the program on the website. I'm told info tables are also available through Social Services if anyone's looking for hot topic options. Social Services is a trusted and well-equipped department to engage audiences who may be interested in what our city does to help people in trouble. They also have something called Community Against Drugs, which is a piece that helps guide discussion for student groups, and there was some interested by, interest by the student groups to maybe invite those folks in. I'll try to be brief, but I wanted, and I don't know what Chair is going to say, but I want to say, Robin, as you step down from your role as a school board member, I want to take a moment to express my heartfelt thanks for your dedication, hard work, and commitment over the past eight years. Your service has had a lasting impact on our school district, and your leadership has helped shape the direction of our community and the lives of many students. While we will miss your presence and your contributions, we know that your influence will continue to resonate in the work of the board and in successes of our schools. Thank you for your service. Best wishes as you move forward in your next chapter. Christina, as you complete your time as a school board member, I want to acknowledge your service over the past four years. Serving on school board is not an easy task, and your time and effort and the role are appreciated. Your involvement in the decision-making process has contributed to the work of the board, and your dedication to representing the interests of the community has been clear. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, whether, especially if it's a garden at schools. Hope you continue to find success in your personal and professional pursuits. Carl. We spent lots of time around dining room tables, talking about schools, before you decided to run. As your time on the school board comes to a close, I want to express my deepest gratitude for your exceptional leadership and unwavering commitment for the last four years. Your contributions to our school district have made a lasting impact, and your thoughtful guidance will be missed. You have been a true advocate for the students, families, and educators in our community, and your passion for improving education has been evident to all who are watching. Your wisdom, integrity, and ability to bring people together has set a high standard for those who will follow in your footsteps. Through your thoughtful decision-making, your unwavering support for our teachers and staff, and your passion for improving education, you've left a legacy that will continue to inspire those who will succeed you. We're grateful for the hours you've spent working to ensure that our schools remain a place where every student can thrive. I think it bears noting that Councilwoman Pam, Councilwoman Pam Sibeski has also been a, had made a commitment to our school board so many, 16 years ago. In her subsequent service to Manassas City Council, her dedication to Manassas is also appreciated. Running for and serving the community is never easy, but she has served with distinction for two terms on both boards. That's almost it. Happy holidays, everyone. I always thoroughly enjoy our start of the season, Thanksgiving, and tree lighting and the parade. We're blessed in Manassas to have such a vibrant, quality program. I'm ecstatic that our Mets cheer and Mayfield float were recognized so deservedly for their efforts. I hope everyone has a safe, happy break from the stresses of school and work over this holiday season. Thanks, guys.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. One of the great things about being on the board is the spotlights. Every school board meeting, just about, we get a glimpse into all the amazing things that our students are doing, and how talented they are, and how much they bring to the table. So when you think about our schools, think about those students you see during the spotlights at the beginning of the meeting. That's what our kids are doing all the time. Oftentimes, we don't hear about the amazing things they do, but when we do hear about them, we should be impressed and share that news. Carl, Robin, Christina, it's been a pleasure and an honor to get to know and serve with each of you. Thank you for everything you've done, for your fellow board members, staff, students, and the greater MCPS family. All three of you will be missed. Please don't be strangers, come back and visit, and I'm sure you're going to watch all our school board meetings. There's a little sarcasm in that laughter, but that's okay. I attended our most recent SEAC meeting. The SEAC is the Special Education Advisory Committee on 11/13. A few of the things we discussed was save the date for the Little Feet Meet, which is a daytime special education, sort of Special Olympics. It's going to be held April 4th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. It's, the rain date is April 11th, 2025. An interesting fact on 2020, the first year we were going to have it, we planned it for March, but then school got closed. So we have gotten it back together. It's going strong, April 4th, 2025, 10:00 a.m. to noon. I believe it's going to be at Osborne High School. One of the other things of note that was discussed was something called SIB Shop. And SIB Shop is a program for siblings of students with disabilities. The city is, the MCPS is looking to start a SIB Shop program to support those siblings of our students with disabilities, to help them be successful, happy, and as well as their siblings. The next SEAC meeting is going to be January 15th, 2025, and one of the great things about SEAC that came out of 2020 is that all of our meetings are hybrid. You can attend in person at central office, or you can attend virtually. Anyone is welcome to join, but especially if you happen to have a child who receives special education services. It's a great way to connect, get, to get information, and to learn a little bit more about special education, not just in the city of Manassas, but in the state. And then finally, CTE Information Night. That's the first time I've been. It was amazing. If you've never seen the CTE program in action, make sure you go the next time they have an event. Our school was filled with, I want to say something around 600 high school students, who all had presentations, who all had tables, who could all discuss the ins and outs of finances, budgeting, credit cards, having a bank account, car insurance, the whole kit and caboodle, something that none of us up here had when we were in high school. Not only that, but there were students who were taking us on tours of the entire CTE program. I actually had a tour guide, and I have to call her out, and I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. She was not actually a CTE student, she was an 11th grader, but she practiced so hard to be a tour guide, she had index cards, and she highlighted the most important facts on the index cards that she was going to read to me. And she had practiced those index cards at home prior to the CTE night. And she was able to take me on a tour of every single CTE program we have and was able to provide insights. And what's great about each of the programs, it was amazing. I learned so much about our CTE program. I was blown away. It was a wonderful night. Thank you for the hard work you did and you and your team did. It was phenomenal. So we really appreciate it. If you ever have a chance to get to see the CTE program in action, please take the time. It's some of the amazing stuff our kiddos are doing, and they should be commended on their hard work. Finally, it's the holidays. We are all wishing each other happy holidays, joyous season, but please remember, the holidays are not always an enjoyable time for everyone, not just for adults, but our students themselves. We all have students who rely on being in school. School is their safe place. So when we think about the holidays, let's remember those who it's a little bit stressful for, and take a moment to be a little bit kinder and more patient to them as they navigate this time. And if you are someone who struggles with the holidays, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's always a voice that's ready to listen, an ear that's ready to hear, and a voice that's ready to help support you. So if the holidays are a stressful time for you, don't hide, reach out to someone you love. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm going to skip all the things that would be duplicating what others have already said. So I'm going to go forward with my goodbyes to my fellow school board members. Robin Williams.
We have been school board members together for eight years. We're the seniors. All the years you have served, you have kept partisan politics away from our school board table, and I respect you for that. I will miss your graceful professionalism and your spirit for working as a governance team. Thank you for your service, and I hope you will continue to stay engaged in the support of our schools. Ms. Christina Brooks. Thank you for your four years of service to Manassas City. Our students have greatly benefited from your selflessness and commitment to fostering student growth. I truly appreciate your dedication to our students and specifically, fine arts enrichment. Your passion and dedication have made a lasting impact, and for that, I am grateful. I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and I look forward to the opportunity for our paths to cross again. Carl Hollingsworth. We first worked together many, many years ago as parents of Jenny Dean students, united by our shared goal of providing the best for our kids and for all kids at school. We both supported the school's efforts, and your influence began there, continuing throughout our respective parenting journeys and beyond, especially with your impactful role on the school board. Your dedication has always been felt, and I am grateful for all that you have done. When you first got on the board, and I don't know if you remember this, but I shared a quote with you. Do you remember that? Okay. It's really, it's for, this is for you, Carl, but it's also for our other outgoing members, anybody outgoing on a board, and also for the new ones coming in. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming. But who does actually strive to do the deeds? Who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions? Who spends himself in a worthy cause? Who, at the best, knows in the end the triumph of high achievement? And who, at the worst, if he fails, at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat?" That's by Thea DeRoosevelt, and I've always seen you as the man of the arena, and I think of that for people in service to our community, to our city, to our schools. I want to wish everyone safe and happy holidays, and we actually do have another meeting on Thursday, but, happy holidays, everyone. Thank you all for being here tonight. Oh. Chair, I'm-
Wait, 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 wait. Dr. Newman, do you have something you'd like to say?
I know you all don't let me talk. I just want to take the time publicly to thank the outgoing school board members. Ms. Brooks, I, I didn't know who you were in 2020, and I didn't meet you until it was time to be sworn in, but the Brooksie Newman bond will never be broken. And you always have a home in Manassas City when you're ready to start teaching. We have one for you. To Mr. Hollingsworth, we don't agree on football teams, but my team did beat yours, and we'll do it again. I remember when you called and wanted to have a meeting when you were thinking about running, and I knew you were going to make a great school board member, and I wish you would have ran again, because, just because you don't say a lot when you do talk, we listen, and we know where your heart is at. I remember your first meeting, too. It was on Zoom, and somebody in the back, we were laughing at you, and we were like, someone needs to put some bass in his voice. But I can tell you, once you got confident in your role, the bass came, and what you said mattered, and this community is a better place for you. And for Ms. Williams, there's only two left that brought me here into the Manassas City family, and you leaving, so. See, Brooke, you, we it. We're it. You know, you, you meet people in, in professional settings, and sometimes you mess around and become a family. And, and being invited to your tailgating at Randolph-Macon and letting me be a part of your family that day, it meant a lot to me. And your support, since I've been here, also has meant a lot to me. I can always count on that phone call when you know it was a tough meeting, and you're like, you okay? It's like, yep, I'm fine, Ms. Williams, I'm coming to work. And I just want to thank you for that. And for the three incoming, Ms. Brown, I know Ms. Miles left, her kid's got school tomorrow. And Dr. Jones, what a turn of events. I go from the supervisor to the employee, and I'm looking forward to it. Looking forward to working with Ms. Brown, Ms. Miles. Had an opportunity to call each of them after their successful campaign, and the one thing that we talked about is that we're going to be a family, and we're going to lead this division to greatness, and we're going to do it together. And we may not always agree on how to get there, but when we make a decision, we're going to be all in, and we're going to do what's right for kids. Doesn't matter what party you ran for, once you are voted in, you are a member of the Manassas City Public School Governance Team, and that work starts. And I can't wait to officially start on the second, the third, what day is that?
January 2nd.
January 2nd, but you know, my phone is always on. If you guys have any questions before then, and I, hopefully, you felt the love and the welcome yesterday during your swearing-in, and know that that is throughout the division, and we're looking forward to working with you next week during orientation.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Vice Chair.
Oh. I was like, wait a minute, I already said comments, but that's okay. Chair, I'm with the School Board of the City of Manassas. Enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2-2, 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 7 and 29 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purposes. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or which the public body or its legal counsel has reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. And 2.2-3711, 29, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where the discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks. At the School Board of the City of Manassas, enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 7 and 29 of the Code of Virginia 1950, as amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Paragraph 7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. And 2.2-3711, Paragraph 29, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews of bidders or offerers, and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating- affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We'll go into closed session.